We'll call it to order, and would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, take the roll, please.
Mayor Bro.
Here.
District one, Morsette.
Here.
Two, O'Connell.
Here.
Three, Rodamacher.
Here.
Four, Wyland.
Here.
Five, O'Malley.
Here.
Six, Burchill.
Here. At this point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present on any item that is not on the agenda. Anyone want to address the council? No? Anyone? Let me ask one more time. Okay, hearing done. Under Plan Commission number four, the final development plans for Kinda Care Learning Center is taken off the agenda according to Denny. So we'll proceed now with the consent agenda items, and Madam Clerk will verbalize those for us.
To approve the regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of May 21st, 2007. To approve the four outlet certified survey map comprising the Berkmos Park private street as proposed by Eric Rowland. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $471,740.10. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office for inspection. To approve the issuance of five regular operators licenses for the period June 5th, 2007 through June 30th, 2008, and the issuance of 12 regular operators licenses through June 30th, 2009, and the issuance of two temporary operators licenses to be used June 28th through July 1st, 2007 at the Hudson Booster Days event, and the issuance of one temporary operators license to be used June 15th and 16th, 2007 at the River Rock Festival. Additional information about operator license applicants is available in the Clerk's office on request. To place on file the quarterly report of the city clerk, the community access board minutes of May 22nd, 2007, and the department head minutes of May 23rd, 2007. That is all.
What is your pleasure on the consent?
Vote.
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Morsette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Rodamacher?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Motion is carried, and let's go to Plan Commission. Item one, conditional use permit for freestanding signage proposed by the River Bank at Prairie View Center, quadrant of Carmichael Road and Vine Street, County Trunk UU, the River Bank. Denny?
Plan Commission recommends approval of the conditional use permit for freestanding sign and electronic reader board at the Prairie View Commercial Center as requested by the River Bank with the following conditions: the overall height limited to 16 feet, lighting on the backlit sign to be no more intense than the existing sign, review of one year, review of the conditional use permit upon one year of insulation or upon complaint or expressed concerns, electronic reader board to have a dimming mechanism, they do propose a photocell for automatic dimmer purposes.
Recommendation is to... Go ahead.
Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
One second motion.
There are representatives of the River Bank and signage company here if there are specific questions of them.
Well, I think the checkpoint there is the review after it's installed and the surrounding neighbors, whether or not it's an acceptance factor, or if they have any specific requirements or changes that they may want to make.
I wanted to ask one question to talk about that. Is that an automatic dimming circuit based on the outside ambient lighting?
Photocell, correct.
Yeah.
Denny, where does that sit compared to the sign that's up there now?
Well, the east, east of the sign, probably 75 feet or so.
Oh, okay.
Denny, the bank completely understands that if we do receive complaints and at the end of the conditional use permit, the end of one year, we decide to revoke it, that there's no discussion about...
We would have to go to a public hearing consideration, go through the proper procedures to be able to do that, but yes, that process is, could be in place, or will be in place.
They understand if the final decision is that it comes down, it comes down.
I understand that.
Okay. Don't want any lawsuits or anything in the future.
Was there ever any discussion about putting a clock on top of the existing sign?
Clock or the reader board?
Well, the reader board and then the... You know, then we'd only have one sign up there.
Similar to Beneterra, right? You get one sign for the whole area.
Yeah. Well, you take the UPS store and Dalla's sign, and if you put the River Bank on top of that. See that picture in your...
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That was not discussed.
I wonder if windage would be a problem, because that's pretty high up.
I was just curious if it was discussed.
Because then you're depending on the base.
I think the difference there, Mr. Connell, is the fact that it's going to be a completely different building, is my understanding. Correct?
Correct.
And it's not part of the other complex.
Okay.
The question's good, because Beneterra has got different buildings that they've combined into one sign.
Yeah. I mean, we're trying to, when we're making our developments, we're trying to get them to use one sign, so... It was a, I was just wondering if it had been discussed at all, so...
It had not.
Sounds like it hasn't. Do we want to try to discuss it further?
Well, maybe we should, I don't know. What would the River Bank people are here...
Scott was right, though. You would have to redo that first sign.
Well, my question was, we don't know if we'd have to redo the first sign. We don't know the strength of the base, what the windage allowance is in that initial sign. Because the higher up you go, the more wind you're going to get.
Well, let's keep in mind what the motion is, and we're going to vote on that, and that...
Well, I think he's offering an alternative.
I know. But we'll do that with a different motion, I assume.
I mean, I think that, like Mayor was saying, it's a separate building. It's an outlet, separate location, it should have its own signage.
Can the River Bank people discuss if they'd be interested in that? Can we...
They're here.
Because they're going to share the same entrance.
That's not been a proposal for the bank. It is a separate, it's a separate standalone facility. In addition, that's not what our agreement is with respect to purchase of the property. With respect to the purchase of the property, we would buy that lot, which is a separate lot from the other existing buildings that are up there, and one of the conditions is that we'd have our own sign to address the building.
Are we ready for the question? Any other questions?
I'm just wondering if this is the start of sign pollution at that intersection, because there is much more possible planned commercial building at that intersection.
Like, you're talking about across the street?
Across the street, on the government property.
Right. So you've got across the street, maybe kitty corner there.
I'm not trying to predict the future here, I'm just...
Yeah, that could be a long ways out, and if we do, we review it in a year or two, or whatever, we can do that.
Yeah. Well, if we have so many signs across the street that we have sign pollution, this one's not going to be, make it any worse.
Well, you've got two quadrants that aren't even in the city.
Yeah.
Right.
Long ways out.
And I do think, you said they were 75 feet apart. There is a question whether or not it would do justice to this building by having something over that.
Right.
Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. On-site parking grading utility improvements for River Crest Elementary School, quadrant of County Trunk F and Cooley Trail, full district of Hudson.
Plan Commission recommends approval of the River Crest Elementary School onsite grading plans, onsite utility plans, and Cooley Trail roadway improvements. Plans to be amended per the city engineer review comments, recommendations, and the sign-off of the revised plans by the city engineer and the water utility director. Angela Popenhagen for Stevens Engineer Engineers is here tonight to answer any specific questions that you may have. Basically, this approval to get the school started on grading in about one week.
Did you have anything to present, Angela?
I'm hoping you're ready to see the site plan again.
I'm going to approve the command approval of River City Elementary School onsite grading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Comments?
On the fire department note, he said, "If cul-de-sac are used, city required must be followed." I mean, do these plans show...
Yeah, there's no cul-de-sacs, and the radiuses on the driveways are sufficient to meet those turnaround point, or...
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Let's go to finance. Number four, application to BNI Business Network International for temporary Class B, Class B retailers license to be used June 15th, 16th, 2007 at the River Rock Festival in Lakefront Park.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Comments? Your recommendation, Catherine, was between you and Nancy, all the requirements are fulfilled, or not?
For the license?
Yes.
Yeah, as far as I...
All bills paid for, including the chief, police? Everything taken care of?
Yes, sir.
Is Mr. Atkins here, the leader of the group? Is there anyone from BNI?
Yeah.
I have a question for you, sir. The paperwork we have indicates that you plan to be there all the time as the apparently sole licensed operator. Is that correct?
There's 12 of them, but I do plan on being there all the time.
We don't have any notification of the 12 that you mentioned?
Yeah, we did receive those.
Catherine has them. We have copies of other people's operators licenses that Mr. Johnson has represented, will be available to work at the booth. We don't have any schedule or anything other than that, except that they will be and have said they will be working at the booth.
But Catherine, what was the total?
I don't...
Do you recall? Total's 12. Okay. And 22 volunteers.
Since you are going to have to, I'm assuming, put together some sort of work schedule for those people...
We have a work schedule, but I don't have it with me.
Could you give that to, bring that to City Hall tomorrow, just so we know?
Absolutely.
Who's responsible at what time?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Well, there was one condition on this license, was that the check to the liquor distributor through the bank before the license can actually be issued.
And that was to be released upon approval this evening?
Correct.
And I'll amend my motion to that. I forgot to include that, the condition.
Okay.
That's okay with the second?
That okay with the second? Yeah. Okay. So everything's in order?
Yes.
I can ask a question about that. If it isn't approved, he's not going to pay the bill? Is that what we're saying?
No, we have the check, and we will, the check will be submitted tomorrow once this is approved.
If it isn't approved, the check won't be submitted?
Then it's not, the city only gets involved. We can't approve and issue the license if there's an outstanding bill. If it's not approved, the city really has no function.
Then that's between those two.
Yeah.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
I merely took the check with the intent of giving it to our chief financial officer, and when it was passed, we would release it. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Applications for renewal of liquor license for the period of 7/107 to 6/3108.
There were some, if you remember, from last time that were held over because of operator license issues, and most of those have been cleared up. Green Mill has been cleared up, Coops Pizza, Sports Club, Twisted Grill, and Historic Casanova. Those licenses, everything's been resolved in terms of operators and any outstanding wholesaler bills.
And they're resolved by the committee of these...
That, and then we've received notice from the wholesaler on the Historic Casanova that they have no outstanding bill.
Twisted Grill did take care of the parking.
Yes.
Move to renew the licenses of Green Mill, Coops Pizza, Sports Club, Twisted Grill, and Historic Casanova.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. Discussion?
I was saying, I was happy to see how these businesses step forward and provide additional people required.
Oh, yeah.
I am too. It's interesting that Green Mill has seven servers, and the other smaller establishments, that's not the same amount of servers. Maybe it doesn't matter, but...
Well, I think it's up to the individual establishment to see who's working when and how many hours each operator...
They may have full-time bartenders versus a bunch of bartenders.
I agree, but, yeah. I thought it was just interesting.
Yeah. Okay, we're ready? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Let's go to application to Hudson Boosters for temporary Class B, Class B retailers license to be used June 28th to July 1st during the annual boosters event in Lakefront Park. Did you have a comment?
Well, there was two others on there. One is called a session, and one I thought was open session for the session.
That, there's still some issues on the seller's permit, so...
Well, I think those are being clarified.
We have one more meeting before that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, if we go ahead with the other one now? Everything in order?
Yes.
Boosters?
Move for approval.
Counsel?
Yes.
Chief of Police, everything in order?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion or comments?
Just two words for the boosters: volume control. Okay, and the music, volume control.
He means music, not the booze, yeah.
Yeah, I don't care about the volume, you know.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do, but on the music, please, down.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Let's go to seven, annual review of Miss Hudson pageant budget and sponsorship request. Excuse me. Recommendation from finance was to continue with our donation of $2,500. Correct?
Correct.
And we want to compliment the people on that committee who have continued to have the Miss Hudson pageant, because I think it's an important factor of really putting our message across where Hudson is and the young ladies who are representing us. So I certainly would look for a motion to okay that.
I will so move the approval of $2,500 to come from room tax.
Right. Which it has in the past.
Well, and room tax is designated for tourism and promotion of the city.
Absolutely.
And this seems an appropriate use for it.
Is there a second? I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Discussion? Did you have any comments, Laura? Even with your voice as weak as it is?
Well, we just want to say that we're continuing to support, and second, we're proud to have increased participation this year in the kids.
We want to keep that going. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Let's go to Public Works Committee. Plans specs for Nye Aldrich Storm Sewer Project. Chuck, you're going to give us the highlights, and then Scott will tell us on what procedure we're going to follow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, the Public Works Committee did meet, and we discussed the Nye and Aldrich street improvements. As you know, the project is to replace storm sewer in the south side of the road and then patch the road. And with the condition of the curb and gutters, I thought it might be appropriate to look at full width, replacing the, all of the curb and gutter and the bituminous for the entire width of the street. And so at that point, I was asked to put together some estimates on additional costs to that, and in order to do that, it would add approximately $82,000 to the project.
And the reason we requested that was that all of the work was going to be underground. And after you finish it, still the street would look bad, and the curb and gutter would look bad. I discussed that with Bob Redner, who initiated this a couple of years ago, and he thinks the neighborhood would be very pleased with that, even though we would have to assess them for half of the... Isn't it half of the curbing?
Yeah, but it would not be half of $82,000.
No, no, no.
Half of what?
It would, their match to ours would be, I think, totaling 64 for everybody.
64, yeah.
How many homeowners does that affect?
Well, it goes from 17th all the way down to Nye, so there's quite a few homeowners involved.
It's no use putting that in.
I agree.
Still having the street, and the curb look terrible. And I think that we should take that particular approach, so we're done with it, once and for all.
Now, we're not asking for appropriation of these funds tonight, because we have some other steps to go through. What I am asking the council to approve tonight is to authorize Denny to schedule a public assessment hearing for those homeowners in that neighborhood to attend, and so we can hear from them about our plans. I think they would definitely be in favor of it, because if you go down Aldrich from 17th to Nye, these people obviously take very good care of their homes. There's a pride of neighborhood there. But the curb looks terrible, because it's sinking in certain places, and we're going to be tearing up half the road. Well, why not tear up all the road? And so there's new, totally new road, new curb and gutter, and it all looks great.
That curb and gutter and street goes back to maybe the early '50s, if I'm not mistaken.
I just wanted to make sure that we have a public hearing for those residents.
Oh, yeah.
Our last meeting, I had asked the same question. Will they be, you know, asked?
We'll go through the necessary procedures. You bet.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify, it's, curb and gutter is about $35,000, so the residents, they should pay roughly half of that in total?
Well, we'll have that, exactly, because this hasn't been put out for bid or anything. We're just ballparking this. But we'll have that all available in time for the public hearing.
That's roughly, though?
Roughly, yeah.
But their responsibility will be over time?
Yeah.
If I might interject here.
Yeah, go ahead, Chuck.
It'll be a little bit higher than that, because what the current project has contemplated, we have some amount of curb removal in there that now would be assessed. So it might be, more likely to be slightly higher than that 35, but not significant.
But that's in the ballpark.
Yeah.
And we'll have the specifics at the public hearing time.
That's the total amount, and the residents are responsible for half of that, correct?
No, that's the half the residents would be responsible for.
No, that's the, no, that's the total amount.
Excuse me, you're talking 35, the city's going to pay about $64,000.
Right, no, I understand.
But that includes more than just assessed amount.
When I talk to people in my district, they're a lot to know what it's going to be, so...
Excuse me, curb and gutter cost a $34,780, as we estimate.
So half of that.
I misunderstood, so we're talking half of that.
Yep.
$18, maybe $20,000 to all the people on there. What we're doing is costing a lot more, but none of that, and this goes directly to Randy's question in the last meeting, none of that will be assessed. What we're going to try to do, as the law permits, is assess it to the various departments if we do work for sanitary, if we do work for the water department in the course of doing this. Because these pipes are all crisscrossing and under and over each other, and...
So Bob understands and can probably, preliminary shock treatment to the residents up there, it'd be around $35,000 range, but probably a little more than that, as Chuck was saying.
Tops probably 20 grand to the homeowners.
Yeah.
For the curb and gutter.
Got it?
The mill and overlay work, the city will take on.
Right. That's all I would disclose.
So my motion is to...
You made a motion. Did we get a second?
Second.
Okay.
All we're doing at this place is authorizing Denny to schedule the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. While you're up there, Chuck, why don't you give us an update on projects?
Certainly. Let's see, you have my memorandum in front of you, I'm assuming. Just a couple of highlights. We did have a Lake Malaloo Storm Sewer Assessment Project kickoff meeting, and so that is, that will be getting underway this month, and it'll wrap up in August. And there will be a, the intent is to have a joint presentation to the council as well as the lake association at the same time.
Aren't you asking for an extension on that as well?
Yes, that is correct. We are asking for an extension request from the DNR of an additional month just because of some of the turnover and the people involved in this project, and just to give us sufficient amount of time to...
We appreciate your updates prior to the meetings. It's been very helpful. Right, counsel?
Yes.
And let's keep the information and communication going. We appreciate that. Any questions, Chuck? On project?
Is Tom Zully here tonight?
Tom Zully is here.
Okay, then I'm not going to ask Chuck about the gutter. We'll talk to Tom. Thank you. Otherwise, I was going to ask you to stay up there, Chuck.
Okay, application of Jeffrey T. Johnson for special event permit for River Rock Festival in Lakefront Park, June 14th to 17th, 2007. Includes setup, tear-down dates. All the agreements have been in order?
Has he paid the prior police department and EMS bills?
All the departments have satisfied.
I think there's an agreement between Public Works, Tom, as it relates to what we're doing on police patrol and also on garbage removal and that sort of thing. Everything's in order, Tom? Okay with you?
This far, I know, yes.
Okay.
And Eric did sign off for the EMS, so apparently they have resolved that issue.
Move for approval.
The one outstanding issue is that it looks like he's obtaining insurance. We don't have an actual insurance certificate, which the ordinance requires. The ordinance requires $3 million of liability insurance and a $3 million umbrella. The council has reduced that for other special events. I think it was, I can't remember if it was Hot Air Fair or Booster, because of the difficulty of getting that amount. I haven't had a request, but I just tell you that, that that's what you've done in the past this year on the insurance requirement. It has, any approval would have to be conditional on if you're willing to accept the $1 million, as opposed to the $3 million, and an actual insurance certificate that meets the requirements of the ordinance, one of which is naming the city as an additional named insured.
Want to make your motion contingent upon that?
Correct, with the $1 million coverage.
And that's due tomorrow under the ordinance, 10 days before the event.
What is this?
We've been notified. This is just telling us that insurance has been bound, meaning they've obtained it, but really what we need is an insurance certificate showing the amounts of each type of insurance, showing that the city's an additional named insured.
Catherine, that...
Let's ask our insurance expert here.
Is it said that if it isn't here tomorrow, then it would be null and void?
That's what our ordinance requires.
That's a contingency.
Yeah, that's up to the council, but that's what the ordinance requires.
And I'll ask this question of Alan and Catherine both.
Well, let's get a second before we have the discussion.
I will second Paul's motion, so we can discuss. The paperwork that we received this evening seems to not include umbrella coverage, which are ordinance commands we get. So I think we might have to amend the motion and second to include umbrella coverage, which is not part of this paperwork at this time.
No. If you wanted to reduce it, and I don't recall exactly what was reduced. I know it was a million. I don't know if it was a million each of aggregate liability and umbrella.
I believe it was.
It was a million each.
It was supposed to be $3 million each.
Yeah, the ordinance requires $3 million each.
So...
I'll amend my motion to a million per occurrence.
Is that okay with the second?
A million umbrella and a million...
And the other.
Yes, yeah, that's okay.
That's not what we're getting here.
That's why I pointed it out, because this will have to be different tomorrow.
Right, he'll have to comply with that, and I will contact the insurance agent and just tell them...
Somebody contact Mr. Johnson as well?
He was contacted today about this issue, that he needed to have the insurance certificate. We didn't get this till quite late this afternoon, so we didn't know the amounts until 4:30.
Well, if it isn't here by the end of the day, then...
Then he has no approval.
Right. Is that okay with everyone?
Are we asking for another $1 million besides the million that we have, or not? The million dollar umbrella, I don't think that is what you said, Paul, is it? I mean, you just want what we have right here, without the extra million dollar umbrella.
No, you amended to include.
So you want another $1 million?
Yes.
Okay. So if it was a million dollar per occurrence, and then a general aggregate of $2 million, that would suffice, everybody?
Is that what we did before?
I think that's what we did with the boosters.
We have a million and then a million umbrella, so whatever that equates. Whatever is similar to the Booster insurance.
Yeah, let's be consistent.
Okay.
Million and million. Okay, is that it? All right with the motion, her and the second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Update on health insurance.
Not a lot to report. I just, I gave everybody an update on that. I continue to work on it. Have not heard back from Representative Rosa Hardestorf yet as to what we can, what maybe they can get out of the state, so...
They're probably pretty busy working on the budget.
I will continue it up, you know, as information comes in, I'll provide these updates.
Well, jar them again.
Yep.
Final draft of the concessions agreement for Lakefront Park Beach House. Catherine, have you got that?
Yeah, I, you should have gotten a lease in your packet. There's been a few changes since then. I did discuss it with the Kalades people, Diane and...
They're here this evening.
Larry Yolakam this afternoon. And I'll just, the changes aren't major, and I can go through them pretty quickly. In section 1B on the rental... In section one B on the rental, the damage deposit will be used, this is what I'm recommending, to repair damage and cleaning, no cost for an inspection by the city. And that's pretty typical, that a landlord doesn't charge for walking through the premises at the end of the lease period. Section two B, oh, regarding Booster and Boy Scout usage.
Say that fast, yeah.
The idea here is that for two thousand and seven, those approvals have already been given. So they have, under the lease, the right to use the concession stand. However, if the parties can come to some agreement regarding shared use, the city's not opposed to that. They just want it in writing and submitted to the city for its approval. So that's the plan for two thousand and seven. Any future lease will be renegotiated.
Right.
So that's...
Understood.
That's that situation. Then, let's see now. The electrical work has been done to put in a new...
Line.
Demand meter type thing. It's going, it's not exactly the same as a separate meter, but will provide the basis for the city to separately charge the usage, electric usage of the concession stand to the tenant. And that's what the rent is, five percent plus electricity. So anyway, the work's been done, so I took that language out of the lease. In section three, we added a provision, since they are operating a cart in the park and they're not really a direct seller because they're a permanent merchant in this city, but we thought it would be good to have the same type of criminal records checks that the police department does for any cart operator in the city. So we've asked them and they've agreed, provide names and driver's license of employees and the police department will do their check that they do. And the tenant will pay that cost and it's minimal, five dollars per employee. Let's see. Oh, on entering the premises, the city has the right to enter the premises and they would just like the city to make best efforts to give them advance notice so they can be present at, you know, when the city goes in. And I think that's reasonable, except in cases of emergency, and that's what we've done. We did talk a little bit about this hood and whether they need a hood for the type of friar. I said that's Mike Wallace's area of expertise. He says they do unless they come in and show him what they're proposing and then he'll check with the code and it's just up to whatever the code says. So those are the changes and I think it's pretty much done. It's theirs.
It's theirs if it's a requirement for their food processing.
Yeah.
Catherine, if you will go back to paragraph one B, you are striking the last sentence, correct? That the inspection will be subtracted from the deposit?
Well, what I did was I just changed it to deductions from this deposit to be used to pay any cost to repair damage and for cleaning that may need to be done.
Okay.
So I took out the inspection language.
I do have a question regarding the meter you just talked about, the demand meter. That is so that the city can bill Kalades for the electricity that they use. Now, let's assume we're not dealing with Kalades who are fine organization. Let's say we're dealing with Beazlebub LLC, okay? And Beazlebub decides not to pay the electric bill. And at the end of the season, we're stuck with it. I believe that we should be able to deduct that electric charge from their deposit as well. And this does not allow us to do that.
Yep.
Yep, yes, or...
Yes, I will add that to the lease.
Understood, Diane. Okay, everything is agreed? Okay.
Move to approve the revised agreement.
Is this the final final?
It's darn near.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Let's go to new business, review the bids and consider awarding the contract for the two thousand and seven sidewalk curb and gutter replacement project. Is Mr. Zulley going to handle that?
Yes, he is.
Come on up, Tom.
This year, the city budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars for the curb and gutter project. Along with Mr. Schwartz, and we've been kind of changed our thinking several years ago that when we do a mill and overlay project, we should consider the restoration of some of the curb and gutters and the storm sewers and manholes to complete the project to a better result. This year, the mill and overlay project is going to include Eighth Street, Eleventh Street, Third Street Hill and Commercial Street and a little bit on Webster. So Eighth Street is the one that has probably the worst condition of curb and gutter. So we went with a lot of work on Eighth Street. So out of the seventy-five thousand dollars, three-quarters of that is going to go for curb and gutter along Eighth Street. This year, we received one bid. That was from Bailey Construction. And that bid included forty-three hundred square feet of four-inch sidewalk for four dollars and seventy-five cents a square foot. Six-inch sidewalk came in at six dollars and fifty cents, and that's approximately three hundred feet of square, three hundred square feet of concrete. Curb and gutter per lineal foot was twenty dollars a foot. And I measured up two thousand four hundred and fifty lineal feet of curb and gutter. So with those prices, that totaled seventy-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. I guess we still have to add five percent administrative fees on top of that. So we're still under the seventy-five thousand dollars.
Good. Need a motion?
Move to approve.
A second motion?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Tom and I don't know if you're aware of any water issues on the Third Street Hill. And if we're going to mill and overlay a problem, that doesn't make sense to me. Are you aware of that or...
Is that right on the curve where the road dips down a little bit?
Whatever Mrs. Keys is having troubles with.
We did discuss that at an earlier meeting. And we're going to, in the mill and overlay project, we're going to be putting a little grading down on that so that that water runs off in an orderly fashion.
The incline is from the west to the east, so that the water...
Dressing, the underlying problem?
Yeah, yep. We're banking it a little bit.
Well, not only that, but you made some corrections further down Third Street. You remember that Storm Sewer was plugged and consequently...
Absolutely, yeah.
You want to give the council a little synopsis of that? I think that's going to improve that whole system, isn't it?
Yeah, there is two catch basins below, actually, it's right on top of the hill here. And the two catch basins would collect the water. And then there was a pipe going down Commercial Street, which was collapsed, and we repaired that last year. So that should help the situation also.
Great. Before we vote, I just wanted, we're in discussion. I just wanted to mention to the TV audience and the council that Tom has assumed the personnel supervision and lead man for Public Works is doing an outstanding job. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Communications and recommendations of the mayor, before we go into a closed session. We have something to be joyful about. The girls' high school track team last Saturday became state champions. And Devin's going to add that to the...
Already been ordered to state championship.
The entrance to the city signs, and we should certainly offer our congratulations. And if we can get the track team down here in our next meeting, we'll do so. That's quite an accomplishment.
They had three individual champions and then they won the team championship as well.
Wonderful.
It is.
Okay, now we're going to go into a closed session. Pursuant to nineteen eight five one C Wisconsin stats to consider, did I skip one? Oh, communications items for future genus. Any alter person?
Do you have something?
I don't recall.
Well, I do. I have a public announcement to make. This is for the people not only here tonight but who may be watching at home, particularly those who are watching at home because you are ipso facto in favor of watching your city council meetings on cable. And a couple of months ago, I addressed a new cable bill that was coming before the state assembly and the state senate that would have the effect basically of possibly impairing, possibly removing your ability to see your city council or any other public function on cable that the public access channels would simply go away. Well, that bill is partly sponsored, one of the sponsors is Kitty Rhodes. And it has been voted on in the assembly with an affirmative vote. Also, a different version of it in the state senate where it has been voted yes to move ahead. And Sheila Harsdorff voted yes also on that. So within two weeks, the committees will be meeting to work out differences in the bills and it may in fact become the law of Wisconsin. We would be the first state in the union to enact such draconian law. There is a petition, which I have already signed and many copies of which blank, will be available at the receptionist's desk here at City Hall. If you have a moment to stop in, and the conditions that are asked for is simply asking for preservation of your public access channels on your cable system, please sign it. We will be sending them to our representatives so our voices can be heard. Thank you.
Anyone else? City attorney?
City administrator?
No, we're going into closed session. Pursuant to nineteen eight five Wisconsin stats to consider interim pay adjustments to lead employees in the Parks and Public Works Departments. And nineteen eight five one E and nineteen eight five one G Wisconsin stats to deliberate regarding Lakefront Park Seawall Project contract negotiations and to confer with legal counsel regarding the litigation in which the city is likely to become involved regarding the Lakefront Park Seawall Project contract. And nineteen point eight five one D Wisconsin stats to consider strategy for crime detection or prevention regarding the renewal of alcohol beverage license of Weston Incorporated Hotel Double. And nineteen eight five Wisconsin, or nineteen eight five one E Wisconsin stats to deliberate or negotiate the possible disposal of city property west of River City Center abutting First Street. And nineteen eight five one E Wisconsin stats to consider negotiating for possible purchase of a building.
Who will go to closed session?
Second.
Morsette?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Radamacher?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Burchill?
Let's take a couple of seconds and then we'll go into closed session. Appreciate everybody coming this evening.